This application seeks to make the mission of the existing retail unit a public house on the site 122 to 138 Newmarket Road. A replacement with an office and a public house reinstated and used in the site. So the site at the corner of the roundabout Elizabeth Way, head of the Mayfair causeway down there, East Road along here. The site falls within a large proposal site which includes some development over here, the Travelodge, Beacon Rise Houses, the Niners House Development. So this is no off-site, this has been developed since next door, there's also been development in here, but just to give you a sense, currently it's hard standing in the back, see the other buildings. From the corner here is the Five Bells pub, this stands at East Street, and this is the retail unit here. And then looking from the roundabouts, this is the site in here. And this is the view from Abbey Street, this is the south-east of the back of the site. So this is the site plan, so building footprints have been shifted back almost over two metres from the edge of the highway, this is part of the highway discussions, future highways improvements for bus staff work. They've also, so the actual pub is in simulation of the Five Bells here. This is a motion capture studio space, it's quite a large area. The main reception coming from here, Newmarket Road. There's been some visitor cycle parking added to the site on Abbey Street here since the application is submitted. There's also a large cycle store, these are Shepherd stands, plenty of them, and ten double stacker stands here for office use. Substation at the back here. So this is another propped element where cars can come into these car park spaces and cycle users and visitors can come through here. So again, it's the same plan, I won't go through that again, but bin stores here which leads out to there, bin store for the pub is stored internally here. So first floor, large open plan office area, toilets and other facilities are there. There's an external terrace here which we've conditioned, so it can't be used past 7pm by office users. And there'll be a screen running along the boundaries of that, some sort of landscaping separating from the edge, approved to small parties. You'll notice here, previously the building line was proposed to carry on down this line, but it's just been set back for the concerns raised from this neighbour here who I visited. So that's been set back now to provide a breathing room for their external terrace area, they've got kitchen window down there. Second floor, much the same as previously, obviously about the terrace. And then the third floor is just on this corner element here, coming down to Abbey Street, this is sort of in the roof space rather than being extra flush flooring. So looking from the streets, so you see the Niners House Development adjacent here. It's the most prominent, has three plus one stories here, and then goes down to a two and a half story, carrying through. Abbey Streets, this is the main view here, had to be creating active contact on Abbey Street, it's nice going through. So this is the south elevation, if you're looking down from Abbey Street, you probably really see this elevation because it's so close to the neighbourhood development, so you would never see that way in this whole entirety. That's the first floor terrace, I've got something about that at the moment. So the west elevation, so this development's been set back, pushed back from that frontage. But yeah, again, first floor terrace coming out here. Again, some details of the first floor terrace, so it's 1.6 metres high, that screen. There's some plants in between there, so you can't go right up against it. So this is just to keep you up to date with context, so further to the east along Newmarket Road, you've got five stories Premier Inn. Going down to four and a half stories, the Travelodge. And then as it carries on, Niners House Development. And then this is the existing sites in here, just carrying on down to two stories, so you'll see the change in scales as it goes along Newmarket Road. So this is the CGI from Newmarket Road, showing an indication of what the building would look like, so the pub would be in this corner here. The main entrance would be through a recess gap in there to the office. Again, looking from the outside of Newmarket Road, huffing here. So see the third store has been set within the roof space as part of their design request. And this is looking from Abbey Street where with Niners House, you've got this sort of street being created at the end, it's coming up to Newmarket Road, where there's that cycle crossing. This is the adjacent student, studio apartments. These are longer views from Elizabeth Way Roundabout, sorry, it's a blur on the screen, the development is in here. This hasn't been updated, but the roof plant area, the material that's been changed to a zinc finish. Previously it was proposed as a sort of glass type material which, as I know conservation had concerns were just going to stand out like a beacon effectively. So that's been put back to zinc, which is now more subsequent appearance. And again, this is the gate lens, looking from further along Newmarket Road. And then further down from Abbey Street, where you can see the building's been set back at this point on Abbey Street. This is an indicative pub layout that the applicant's provided, just about how it might look in terms of seating arrangements, entrances. Say bins being stored there, the main office space with the pub being stored there, back-up house bar, just to give you an indication of how it might be laid out. Also for the chair approval, it was recommended subject to conditions.
Well, our speakers are ready, so shall we call upon...
Chair, I believe we had a letter that's going to be passed around?
Yes, we've passed around the letter and we've given our agreement.
The claimant's client can complain of objections to this application, but the council felt a safety support, hence why he's been slated with that letter. And for the avoidance of doubt, we have no view on principle of the development or seeing what's currently derelict site brought in to use. And the issues we raised, we believe can be dealt with by condition, we're not objecting to the principles. And firstly, we think the use of double stacking racks on this development is unacceptable, and these are considered difficult to use by many people. You know, this is not a highly constrained site like some in the city centre, and they're discriminating towards many people who can't use them. There is space to remove car storage in favour of cycle parking to allocate space. So we ask that you add a condition to require Shepherd stands at the expense of some car storage space. And we initially objected that the applicant didn't include any visitor spaces. We believe that's been resolved by the addition of eight visitor cycle parking spaces. We'll withdraw that part of our objection if the officer can confirm this complies with the cycle parking standards. However, our main concern is about the issue of deliveries of what's blocking a very heavily used cycle route that provides access to the Newmarket Road crossing. There's already a problem with vehicles crossing there and blocking the site. And I understand that environmental improvement scheme has been chosen to try to address this problem. The amended site plans for the lorry at the site show, for example, a lorry parked currently where cars block one side of the road. So what happens, for example, when a lorry turns up and all the parking is full, presuming the whole road is then blocked? And so we were aware there was already an issue. So we believe that conditions should be implemented to require delivery only from within the curtilage of the site. And the developer required to pay for TRO providing double yellow lining on both sides of Abbey Street adjacent to the development. So in summary, please add two conditions, firstly the use of Shepherd stands to require number, not double stacker stands which many people can't use. And secondly, a condition to require either delivery only from the curtilage of the site to prevent lorries blocking the crossing route. Or a section 106 commitment to fund a TRO for yellow lines that which the lorry could then deliver on for a short period of time. Thank you.
I suppose the question which immediately arises is that can the matters which Martin has raised be dealt with by condition?
Do you want to go before the speakers or you?
Well, I might know, but let's stack that as a question. The discussion's now... Oh, I'm so sorry, of course there are other speakers, yes, I'm so sorry.
Thank you Chair. The proposals in front of you will deliver a new bespoke headquarters building for Ninja Theory Limited, a Cambridge-based video games developer. The application also includes the introduction of a new replacement pub that will be operated by Ninja. Proposals have been subject to extensive pre-app discussions with your officers, proving extremely beneficial with the application supported by all statutory consultees. CFP architects have designed a high-quality building that will enhance and further regenerate this area of Newmarket Road. The cycle parking arrangements are acceptable with appropriate access from Abbey Street and visitor parking also provided. The scheme is fully compliant with local plan policies and importantly will respect the amenities of surrounding properties. I would now like to introduce to you Nina Christensen, founder and chief development director of Ninja Theory, to say a few words about the business and the plans for the pub.
Thanks Peter. Ninja Theory is a world-class AAA video game developer and publisher. We founded here in Cambridge in 2004, and over the years we have created original IP for global corporations such as Sony and Microsoft, as well as working with beloved brands such as Star Wars, Marvel and Disney. We've long been world leaders in motion and full performance capture, and one of the driving forces for us designing our own office is to enable us to create a bespoke space which enables us to continue this work. When Lyric approached us with this site on Newmarket Road, we were delighted. We've been looking for a central site for years. Being centrally located is core to our culture. We are a social company that loves being a part of the fabric of Cambridge. When it was further explained to us that the development would by necessity include a public house, I was ecstatic. This literally makes us the coolest video game developer in the UK. So this is an opportunity for us to further integrate with the local community, as well as being quite the draw when it comes to attracting and retaining talent in the studio. The bird or worm will be fully open to the general public, and reinstating a pub on this site which has been derelict for so many years is an exciting prospect. We will be employing an experienced general manager to head up the pub team. We've got good connections in and around Cambridge that will help ensure we find the right person, and it is absolutely our intention that this forms an integral part of our use for the building.
Thank you so much, carry on.
Okay, thank you. This application represents a fantastic opportunity for us and one that will enable us to continue to grow within this great city. Our project team has worked diligently with your officers to deliver an outstanding building which will not only enhance the area visually, but also increase the amenities available to the local community. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this morning, and I hope that you will be able to support this application.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sorry I overlooked your presence and intentions to speak. Open to members now. Damon Tunnell.
Okay, what an exciting company clearly they do raise, which is why I found the actual building dreary and disappointing. I find these small, pokey windows and a generally unimpressive facade onto Newmarket Road. Reminds me of that awful building on the other side of Elizabeth Way Roundabout, Columbus House. And I just think it's an opportunity missed to have something as plodding as this. And I would thought a company with the image that Ninja clearly has around the world would be looking for something that really was zingy and exciting and made you sort of sit up and look. So that would be my first comment. I'm disappointed to see that there are no trees, that there isn't a setback sufficient to give any trees. I thought the plan was that Newmarket Road from Travel Lodge down to Elizabeth Way which would become a tree-lined avenue. And I think that is an opportunity lost as well. So I feel the sense of disappointment when I see this and feel that they could do better.
Could you put the CGI back? Okay, so this is the building which has just been described by Damon Tunnell. What do other people feel about the application?
Just got a question first. Can I clarify, in terms of staff cycle parking, how many Shepherd stands against the double stackers which clearly are well-used at the railway station but don't seem to be necessarily popular in the cycle campaign? But there is clearly a mixture for those who can accommodate one or not as a place may be. And also the setback from the road, clearly there is a bus stop here at the moment which will remain, but clearly there's a very tight corner between the bus stop and the buildings behind, and there is clearly a necessity and also a benefit from stepping it back a bit at that point because it gets very tight. Can you just tell how far, I couldn't picture from the image how far back that setback is. I'd love your comments on this, can you go?
Well, that'll come as another stack of questions. You've put a long contribution to making this here. Councilor Metzinger.
I would very much welcome the answer to the question about the stacking. There was also a question about the cycle partners' request for a condition of recording deliveries which I think is particularly important. So I would welcome some feedback on that. I have to say, I don't really agree with Damon's assessment of this building as very boring. I will wait to see what it looks like when it's built because I always find it difficult to match the CGI with... It will be too late then. But my instinct on this is that actually I quite like this building and that it's a good progression down. Clearly as you go down Newmarket Road, the size of the street and the size of the buildings and scale of buildings has to change as they approach the junction. And I think this is dealt with appropriately.
This may seem trivial, but I need to ask it. At the moment, the bus shelter, it's kind of, well, it looks like it's joined building, it's that close. And it's because, I don't quite know how they managed to fit it in when they put the bus shelter in. So I really welcome the extra space between the frontage and to the bus bus shelter. So my question is, I mean, I use this bus shelter a lot because I get up there to go to the Easterio committees and such like. It's in the corner. So I'd like to know, will there be some kind of conditions put in place so that when construction, during construction, then obviously there will be boards up because they'll need to knock the building down. I'd like to, in addition to make sure that there is provision of a bus shelter. I don't quite know how that's going to be done on that site.
In the vicinity?
In the vicinity, yes. And if this bus shelter, because of the way it's kind of really, really close to the building, it may well be that it's no longer serviceable and might have to replace.
Re-visual construction.
Yes, we'd replace. So if there needs to be a replacement bus shelter if that bus shelter is damaged as a result of unwelding it from the current building.
Peter?
Yes, I'm afraid I also don't think I'm looking at the same building as Councilor Tunnell Cliff. I think this is a dramatic architectural improvement to the streetscape, the building itself is attractive. And I don't know for certain, I'd probably be the only person that was taken used to drinking Five Bells many years ago. And it's been very sad to see the state of collapse and disrepair the pub has been in. And to have a pub open there as well would be a great benefit to the community. I suppose at least with Ninja operating it, you won't be dancers. But I think it's a very fine scheme. I'm a bit worried about however any conditions being set that might problematise drain deliveries. So I'd be, yeah, so I'd not be too problematic in that.
Councilor Smart?
Yep, so, excuse me. Yeah, so I'm sort of awkward now, I'm afraid Nina, I've never played a computer game in my life, but that's no consequence really on this application to be honest, because it's just a type of application we're considering. I don't really know what motion capture studio is, but I presume that's no consequence either. What I am concerned about is electricity substation, whether we have any considerations on that? Because often those places are outdoors, aren't they, not enclosed? Whether there's any sort of heat and air conditioning factors that needs to be taken aware of care of? And I'm not sure if that's even a planning consideration, but it seems interesting. The one planning thing I could just say is that the head of streets and spaces 6.11, no cycle parking is being provided for pub staff and customers. So I think if that is possible to condition, I think it would be good to have that. And it surprises me that you've been in Cambridge so long and you don't seem to be aware that people do cycles to the pub a lot. So I mean, we do need cycle places for people coming and going, I think ID would be possible. And on the quality of the building, I think Damon's right. This is a part of the current trend in architecture and building to give your block of stuff automated brick. Sometimes with a little bit of detailing like this one has on the corner, that makes it acceptable to fit into a modern urban streetscape where there are often older buildings that look nice to this bit, doesn't really matter. So I think he's right, and I think Nina, you have missed an opportunity to provide some sort of special building in an iconic type building that sticks out on the street. This is just a block of stuff that fits into all the rest of the streetscape, and it's fine as far as that goes. And you know, that is acceptable, there wouldn't be anything to vote against on that. But it could have been better.
I doubt whether a building which is unexceptionable is sufficient grounds for rejecting it. God forbid every building should be required to be splendidly innovative and excitingly jazzy. I mean, this would turn the city quite quickly into a sort of fun fair. Some people might want that. Councilor Winko?
I have some comments on the application, Jeff, I was just waiting for them.
I think the officer now got a long list of questions, and let him deal with them.
Thank you Chair. So to come back to some of the, I've got to try and go forward as much as I can. So on cycle parking, just for clarification, the office requirement is that there's 59 cycle parking spaces. They're provided 60. 20, there'll be 20 Shepherd stands and 10 double stackers if you would, so obviously each one could hold two. So two thirds of them would be Shepherd stands, one third would be double stack ones. So I mean, obviously, in theory you could condition it to change those Shepherd stands, but you'd probably have to accept lowering the number of cycle parking places you're providing. Because obviously double stack, you can fit a lot smaller space rather than having a row of Shepherd stands. But that's something perhaps you need to consider. But based on what they're providing, there's no policy basis of which Shepherd stands are helpful if you would as an option. And given it's a small part of the overall cycle parking scheme, I think it's probably okay in this case providing. In terms of the servicing and the WO lines and delivery car parking, I'd like to note that the highway authority, when they were commenting this, they didn't request any through section 106 approval otherwise about space being WO aligned or concerns about highway safety in terms of movements when that takes place. So my feeling is that I don't think it would be appropriate to secure that through a section 106 or a cramming condition of some sort. But I think given the higher authority, you're okay. I think we need to look at it based upon what's provided really. So the setback from the road is 2.3 metres approximately, so setback, what they're introducing additional depth is 2.3 metres.
That's not the same thing as the setback from the road?
No, I think the only setback would be more than that, but it's a bit more compared to the building line pressures. So in terms of trees, because I think there's ways possibly about improving that with our trees. But obviously that land has been earmarked for the highway improvements, so I wouldn't really want to interfere with that by suggesting the trees that are put on that site. Because I may interfere with that, and also it's currently hard standing with no trees there present. So I think it would be difficult to ask for that to be integrated into the scheme in this context in my opinion. In terms of the bus stops during construction, whether they actually need to be, temporary ones need to be relocated further away during construction so they're not lost. I think it's to be dealt with separately through the highway authorities, might say the section 278, 278 green? Yeah, temporary traffic violation or whatever. So I don't think it's up to me to necessarily control for this application, but there is, the county council would be the means of controlling that to make sure there is still a bus up there, I don't need to engage with them in order to make sure that's secured. In terms of the substation, the environmental health team have raised objections to the sizing in that location. And if there were a problem they would, there's a plant noise insulation condition which I think is designed to integrate that into there. So there wouldn't be any noise being heard from the adjacent studio partners, for example. So I think we've got measures to secure that. I think those were most of the points I had briefly down here.
Yes.
I think in relation to the delivery to the pub, it's important to note that there is a pub on the site that I've agreed has fallen into some disrepair, but it could be operated again without any funding permission. So my assumption would be that the highway authority take that into consideration, they've brought their views forward.
Councilor Smart?
Sorry, Chair, I didn't have a good answer to my question around 6.11.
Thank you very much. There have been, because that was before the plans were amended, which, looking at the site plan, they're provided on the corner Abbey Street here. So there's nine spaces I believe, it's five for the pub and four for the office, as I explained earlier. But there is some form of cycle parking there now for visitors, so that's been included since it was submitted.
Very good, I think, yes, Councilor Metzinger.
Sorry, on the delivery point, I do have some concerns about the cycle campaigns of use. The kind of pub is not being used, but it's not just that there will be deliveries for the pub, there will also be deliveries for the, there will be an extremely large office block. So the extent of servicing of this building has just changed very significantly from what is there at the moment. It wouldn't surprise me enormously if the highway security health had been extensive for that. And I do wonder whether we could possibly ask that that be looked at, just with a bit of urgency, because I do think it's a concern. It's not something I would turn down, I just wonder whether you could go a little bit.
Very good, well, given all those caveats, I think we're now in a, no, we're not in a position to proceed. There are two more contributions, yes, councillor.
Yeah, just, particularly given a bit of local input. I think outside of planning of councils and the highways, sometimes you have to look at the ability currently to park alongside this building at the moment and decide whether in the long term that should be prohibited and maybe just allow a loading bay with a restriction on it in terms of meeting the requirements of this proposal and the adjacent proposals. But at the moment, a car is currently parked there full-time during the day, which is on part of the cycle route which we need to deal with. And I think the intent was potential was to wait and see how this was put forward as a proposal before it was dealt with. But I think that point is registered. At the moment, you've got half a cycle crossing, as it were, or cycle way to get to the crossing. There's also a big refrigeration plant just attached on the other side which causes far more problems when they have big deliveries into Italy. But they've been here a long time and until they move, that's going to be the case. In terms of the design, I think colleagues have been a bit harsh on the design. I mean, I looked at this design, I thought it's similar to the one that's won loads of awards on Hills Road. Similar brickwork, similar placing, and actually, if you take your mind back five, 10 years in terms of Newmarket Road, whether you like what's up there now or not, there's clearly a big uplift in the road in terms of how it's looking, how it's starting to build out with the trees and the setbacks for the Travelodge and the flats. This is again at the corner, so the setback can't be as great, and there's existing buildings to be aligned with. But I think it's a good design and should be commended. And just a bit of reality in terms of whether there'll be any changes to the roundabout that someone alluded to. The original estimated cost of dealing with the roundabout, which would involve fitting in... The original estimated cost of dealing with the roundabout, which would involve fitting in the underpass, was over £10 million and that was about five years ago. I should imagine add a few millions on to that and whether the county in their restricted financial situation, whatever, contemplate changing that roundabout and our government money is unlikely.
I think is that everybody's right. We will then now proceed to the vote. The officer recommendation is one of approval. Those ready to accept that recommendation, please indicate. We are seven and those against, and one abstention, and one extension. Thank you, we'll see you later.